Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, thank you.
Before I call this County Council meeting to order, I'd like to wish everybody, especially all the ladies in the room, a happy Valentine's Day. I'd like to call the regular meeting of Suffolk County Council for Tuesday, February fourteenth to order. Ms. Dean, would you please give a certification? May we all stand and pray the name standing before you. You guys will be here.
Let us pray. County Council, I need to thank you and acknowledge you as the one and who we live, move, and have out been. We thank you for allowing us to come to the table once again to do the business for the people that you've afforded us to. We invite your presence and ask that you dwell among us and help us to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of my voice. We especially ask that you continue to bless our men and women who are in uniform, who serve in various capacities. We ask that you keep them safe and help them to serve with integrity, with love, and with sound minds. And as we go through our agenda tonight, we ask that you bless the families everywhere. And we just thank you for being our, for giving us the resources that we need to govern this county. These are our blessings we ask, and thank in the precious name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Good night, you all. Be led in the pledge of allegiance by retired US Marine Governor Keith Martin Marison, who served our country from December twenty ninth, nineteen eighty-seven to December thirty first, two thousand and seven, with ten, twenty years of active service. He's a Gulf War service veteran that supported Operation Desert Storm and Operation Iraqi Freedom. We encourage him as County Executive Number Six. Thank you for your service.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Andrew, before we approve the agenda, I'd like to move under new business numbers eight dash one and two up to the lower approval of the minutes. Do you approve the amended agenda? Sorry? It's been moved in properly second. If we approve the amended agenda in discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The amended agenda is approved. Our motion to approve our minutes or approve of, uh, sorry. We moved it properly second. If we approve the minutes from our regular meetings to January twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, approval of our minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Mr. Chairman, if you could do the number one second, but do number two first.
Okay.
The person is Amer- excuse me, American Legion and the EMS Director. It's easier if he'll introduce that person.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce to you the eyedore recipient this year, Private Taylor B. Harbin. She came to us as a recruit through the program we had in the council and asked for due to staffing struggles and having enough certified personnel. So she came into EMS as a recruit, obtained her ENT, and is currently enrolled in the paramedic program and about halfway completed that. Outstanding young lady. Definitely very compassionate, very driven, very focused. She's very determined, and she puts her patient care, care for the citizens of this county above everything. She shows up as required. You never hear a complaint. Just an exemplary employee. So I would like to, you know, allow her to be presented with us tonight on y'all's behalf. And we thank you very much, Taylor, for your commitment and dedication to Suffolk County.
Mr. Chairman, the Chief of Police, Hal Jones, is here. I said, Hal.
Hey, good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you all for giving us an opportunity to come forward today. Talking about one of our officers who won our 2022 Officer of the Year, Corporal James Solomon. He actually comes to the Suffolk area from Greenwood, met a, one of our police officers at the YMCA within Minnesota Church in around two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, met First Sergeant Gale, and really got an interest in law enforcement and coming in our community. So he actually started out as an animal control officer. Later became a police officer, then two thousand and twenty-two became one of the traffic division. He exemplifies using empathy, giving the people. He's very compassionate. He has a knack for locating stolen vehicles. So in the last fourteen months, he's recovered nineteen stolen vehicles. But he's just a great guy, a good ambassador for our community. He exemplifies what we expect with quality of life issues and bringing goodwill in our community. And for that reason, we would like to present him as our Officer of the Year. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Major Ray. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our recipient is Senior Corporal Miko Greg Rice. What can I say about her? She's hardworking, she's a mother wife. She mans a eighty-man cell, which is out B-Pod. I mean, she is typically from the work. Wish I had more like her. We have to run off sometimes, but she's, she's just that dedicated. I want to thank her also tonight for being such a hard worker. And thank you all for presenting this tonight.
Mr. Chair, Dennis, ask the next couple of ones.
Good evening. Sounds to give me a heart of pleasure to nominate Officer of the Year. First, I'd like to nominate Sergeant, Staff Sergeant, just gave him the Adam. That's known about Tim Allen. He's spent ten years, he's been taking it with Suffolk County Sheriff Office. But prior to that, he's been trying to do the half years with the United States Air Force. Ken Allen is our aviation supervisor. He actually controls our, all of our airplanes. He's also a drone supervisor as well. He's been responsible for several apprehension of criminals, searching that we've been searching and apprehending prisoners for. He's also located the several missing and lost citizens of Suffolk County. Just recently, located a gentleman that had dementia. He's eighty years old and almost at midnight, and Sergeant Allen came out with the drone, located that individual, able to save their life as well. And most of you heard about the three-year-old that was missing at the State Park in, at Conset State Park. He's instrumental also in finding the young girl too. And he's, he's very professional. He's one that probably does everything for his share of fault. And one that must deserve it a lot. I'm the exciting. I'm American Legion Officer of the Year. Give me big pleasure that I made Staff Sergeant Ethan Wellerby. Was it twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Mel, uh, I don't know, Battle Award for Officer of the, Officer of the Year for American Legion. He's been deployed in Suffolk County Sheriff's Office for fifteen years and coming in signing to our patrol division. On September twenty-fifth, Sergeant Wellerby was performing his duties as shift supervisor on D shift in Suffolk County Sheriff's Office. And approximately eight in that got a call with domestic that was a pregnant male woman in southern part of the county. Wellerby was the first deputy to arrive on that scene. The only detail that he knew was the daughter had called and said that her mother-in-law was going to a divorce and that he had came back to the residence that morning and was pretty much attacked when his mother was axed to the vehicle. The mother and daughter had gone next door and called nine-one-one. And shortly before Wellerby arrived, he was meeting a man that was house fighting as well. He moved the garage at the end of the house, completely engulfed in fighting and flames. And then shortly after that, he heard gun, uh, those were gunshots, several gunshots. Sergeant Wellerby was shot, was hit, so was hit the late area of his, uh, fight at that time. He returned fighting and attacked. He believed to tell the fight, he cared to communicate over the radio, informing the other officers on the scene to make sure that they were safe on their end of that scene as well. Sergeant Wellerby, uh, made a turn fight, he did enter the individual, individual, uh, turned and tried to get a cover behind the rest of the house. By the time how SWAT teams returned, he has self-detrition wound. They call the death of the suspect at that time. Again, Sergeant Wellerby, uh, Officer of the Year for twenty twenty-three.
Good job, Sergeant.
Certainly, I wanted to, um, these three Sergeant Wellerby, now we nominate Lieutenant Robert Reynolds. Um, he was even given a Battle Award for South Carolina Service Association, for the State South Carolina Service Association. On September twenty-sixth, Robert Reynolds, Lieutenant Reynolds, performed his duties as a shift supervisor with the Suffolk County Sheriff's Office. And shortly after noon, he was part of a domestic disturbance in northern part of the county. Details of the call were confused and confusing at the time, but deputies believed that it was possible hostage situation that occurred at the residence. Sergeant Lieutenant Reynolds arrived at the residence. And at that time, the suspect was sitting at the kitchen table. He initially noticed some signs that a telephone altercation may have taken place. But he sat down at the table and continued communicating with the suspect. And approximately after ten minutes, the suspect remained unchanged drastically. Reynolds recognized several signs that prove that of the dynamics of the conversation had changed. The suspect asked Lieutenant Reynolds numerous times to step outside and just give me about five minutes. Lieutenant Reynolds believed the suspect wanted this time to himself to commit suicide. Lieutenant Reynolds knows the suspect looked down to his neck twice. Reynolds then stood up and lieutenant noticed the grip of his handgun in the chair to the suspect's left. Lieutenant Reynolds immediately began shouting for the suspect not to do this. The suspect reached for the handgun. Lieutenant Reynolds pushed the suspect to increase the distance between the two and immediately took his gun. The suspect raised his gun towards Lieutenant Reynolds, and Lieutenant Reynolds fired at the suspect, stabbed him, and killed the suspect. Lieutenant Reynolds then assured the scene was secure before other legislative responders were processed. The victim had been severely assaulted, but was okay at the neighborhood house. So this, so this Lieutenant Reynolds was selected and received a Medal of Battle Award in the South Carolina Service Association. Yeah, again, to give me big pleasure to nominate Joshua, Deputy Joshua Curry, for the twenty twenty-three Medal of Battle Award. He's been deployed in Suffolk County Sheriff's Office for approximately nine months in the current of our Central Patrol Division. He came to the office as experienced from another agency and prior to his service with the United States Marines. The training he received with the Marines, the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy, and the South Carolina Sheriff's Office served him well, as he proved in two calls, in particular in the vast summer. On June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, a call came out that a victim had a stab in the city of something. Deputy Kirby responded to assist. He arrived and immediately grabbed his first aiglet and ran to assist the victim. She had suffered a severe stab wound that in the artery, and she was losing a large amount of blood. Deputy Kirby was able to pack the wound and apply pressure, stop the bleeding until EMS arrived. The victim survived and received full recovery. On July nineteenth, Deputy Kirby responded to a dress on south side of something, just outside the city of that man. In reference to his shooting, Deputy Kirby was the first to arrive and saw that he had a line in Broadway covering his body. Deputy Kirby, previously treated a third aid yet, assessed the victim's injuries. He noted three gunshot wounds, the most serious being the victim's abdomen. Deputy Kirby applied dressing to the wounds to stop the bleeding and maintained pressure until EMS arrived. All the while dealing with the chaos of the crime scene, random individuals standing over him. He also relayed information gathered from businesses to other deputies. Based on this information, Deputy Kirby actually, and the arrest was made, the information that he received from the victim. Based on this information, Deputy Kirby saved two lives from June to July. And he too was also given the Medal of Battle Award.
Good job, Captain. Good job, Captain.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, County Council. See, we have a busy year ahead here, but finding officers that we have and their job of both the training. And certainly want to thank you for our surgical, these officers as identifying them tonight on their heroic action that he took during their armed service. I want to thank everyone.
Sharon. How we did have an extra beautiful red.
And also, uh, that, that's why the Wellerby also was nominated and received the American Legion Officer of the Year for Suffolk County.
For those of you who are in the audience, now to speak, I'd also like to recognize a high school student that we have in the audience, Mr. Joshua Rudman from my high school. Three, three nine from American Legion. Joshua. Oh, Rudman. Your name's coming in.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Ladies and gentlemen, RZ number twenty-two fourteen.
Just a minute, Vanessa, who's planning that, so tell her. RZ twenty-two fourteen is at forty-six oh five Patriot Parkway. The applicant is Miss Latonya Debois, who's also a property owner. This is in Council District One. Uh, this is a request to resell approximately one point eight nine acres of property from general residential to agricultural conservation. Uh, this is the property in question. It has direct signage on Patriot Parkway, and it's just west of the railroad tracks that connect to Stronger Forest Base between the railroad tracks and the railroad lane. This is how the property looks much today. Uh, it is thoroughly vacant. There is a single family home. At the front, it's a manufactured home. It's in the process of being demolished. It is a piece of general commercial property, but also an area of agriculture conservation. There's AC zoning to the east as well as to the, or to the west and as well as to the south. The applicant is requesting mystery zoning because it's their intention to build a Harris lawn on the property. The general residential zoning does not permit commercial uses such as Harris lawns, but the agricultural conservation district does. Uh, this is the property as it is today. They're actually in the process of demolishing that manufactured condo and moving it from the property to make way for future development. The property is in the military protection planning area. Generally, in the military protection planning area, we are supportive of zoning designations that decrease the residential density or convert it to possible commercial use because this is in an area of the county where we want to limit residential exposure. Uh, by and large, a request to resell this particular piece of property from GR, which does allow six thousand square foot lots and residential uses to agricultural conservation, which requires minimum money for lot sizes to be compatible with comprehensive zoning. A planning commission does recommend approval of this request. You do believe it's in alignment with the twenty forty plan? And if the rezoning is approved, the applicant would have to go through the conditional use review process in order to use it for commercial purposes. Have you answered any questions that you may have?
Any questions come through? First raise, sir. We moved in properly second. Then we have first reading on RZ twenty-two fourteen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. RZ twenty-two fourteen, first reading is approved. RZ twenty-two dash thirteen.
Uh, this request is to resell a point two-two acre portion of a larger tract of property from agricultural conservation to general commercials. Planning commission continues to recommend approval of this request. There have been no changes since that.
Move the third ring. Second, let's move the property second. Then we have third reading on RZ twenty-two thirteen. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Third reading approved. Please say aye.
Aye.
Third reading is approved.
Thank you.
Resolution number twenty-two zero one, Mr. Prime.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, we actually have two items on the agenda concerning Project Pignus. Uh, first is a resolution to show good faith. You intend to go forward with a payment of tax agreement. And second is first reading on the payment of tax agreement ordinance by title only. So if you'd like, you may take the resolution first. Uh, you had some explanations from the president of the Development Board earlier this afternoon with all the details not yet available for public. But it will be soon. So I'd like to agree to pass on the resolution.
First reading of the resolution. Sorry. Approved the resolution. We have motion in the second to approve the resolution, RZ twenty-three zero one. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. First reading is approved. Ordinance number twenty-three ninety-five, Mr. Prime.
Yes, so this is the first reading on title only on the ordinance to approve the payment of tax agreement. We don't have the full agreement yet. As you're, Mrs. Regis, they, negotiations were fairly complete by this afternoon, so we didn't have that for you instead. But you can have first reading on title only. We might have, like, the, probably getting on third reading. Ooh, first round one, first reading.
Second.
It's been moved in properly second. Then we have first reading of ordinance number three ninety-five. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed.
of Daryl McGane. When that came with a motion and a second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the alcoholic drug appointees and a discussion. Hearing none.
Mr. Chairman, let the record show that I refuse myself. But, uh, these actions.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All votes.
And then we went to the cultural commission and recommendation, recommendations for the committee to reappoint Mr. Brunson and then to appoint Mr. Dryden, Ms. Meredith, Ms. Lully, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Palmer, um, Ms. Scott, Ms. Allen, Ms. Zipperman, uh, Mr. Zipperman, that's your job.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Crawford and Ms. Welch. That was a motion and a second.
We have a motion in a second to approve those appointees to the cultural commission and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All votes. The appointment is up.
I guess the last thing that we have is the library board and that's the report from the clerk of council concerning the expression that the library board, which was reported as four years per term. It was agreed that, uh, that the term would, would be changed three years, uh, the library board ordinance, but allows the ending term for the current board members to remain as is. The three-year term will be used for future appointments. There's no action needed on that, I don't think.
Okay, thank you for your report. Uh, the next committee meeting took place at two thirty this afternoon. The Land News Management, Mr. Hughes.
Land News Committee did meet this afternoon, although we discussed and had discussions concerning zoning districts and guidelines for solar development. Uh, committees unanimously agreed to direct planning staff to continue their research in the matter. That's a motion in a second coming from the committee.
We have a motion in a second coming from the committee and a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All votes. That your report, Mr. Hughes?
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, next committee meeting took place three P M this afternoon, Public Works Committee. Mr. Baker.
Yes, we met. Everybody was present. Um, no action is needed, uh, but we talked about, uh, two things. The litter program, which was quite lengthy, and then we got into, uh, an update on the roads and issues throughout the county. Um, as I said, no action was needed. I was gonna ask Mr. Washington, Councilman Washington, if you'd like to comment, because a lot of it, he had a lot of input with what we talked about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, and thank you, Councilman Dazzel. I am, um, extremely pleased and, um, I want to thank, um, Councilman Baker for working closely with me on this issue. And I want to thank the other members of council for realizing that these two issues are, uh, important to citizens of Sumter. So, um, let's discuss the litter issue first. Um, after some, um, discussion, we, um, determined that the county administrator and the public utilities director will do some background and research and bring us back some options that we can execute to address the litter problem. One of them being, the primary one being, contracting with a company, um, to collect litter in rural areas around trashed up sites, since these are the sites where most of the trash is. Trash falls off of trucks, falls off of cars, people litter, but most of the trash is in a three to five mile radius around, uh, trash sites. And so, uh, county administrator and our very capable staff will come back, uh, with some suggestions and some, um, impacts financially, and then we will be prepared to move forward to begin addressing the massive litter issue that we have. We also want to thank the volunteers who've been in the trenches, uh, picking up litter and trying to address the problem. The other piece of, uh, what we discussed today and agreed in principle on is to ramp up the enforcement piece. Um, if someone litters in the county, um, we're gonna find them, um, they're gonna do community service, they're gonna be picking up trash on the roads, and there may be subsequent, um, penalties for repeat offenders. Um, the litter committee will also be exercising an education program in the schools, because as you know, our kids are impactful to us. If a kid sees a parent throwing some trash out of the car and they've learned it in school, they'll say, hey, mom, why are you doing that? And so we are attempting to aggressively, um, address this from a lot of different angles, but the, the contracting of the trash piece around, uh, rural trash sites will help to make a, a very big improvement. So I want to thank, uh, my colleagues for zoning in on this issue, and I want to thank Councilman from Dazzel for his leadership on that. Um, we also attacked in some lengthy detail, the private road issue. Um, as you know, there are a number of private roads in the county, um, where a lot of residents live. Some roads have twenty to thirty residents, and over a number of years, those roads have become impassable. And so at times, it might be difficult or impossible for emergency services, i.e. fire, law enforcement, medical, and so forth, to access those roads. Uh, my colleagues and I have realized that that is an issue, and so, uh, we are exploring, uh, at least three options at this point. And we've also asked council to bring us back some numbers on all three options, but what I can tell you is that there is consensus on council in addressing this issue, and pretty soon we will, we will have something that, uh, will be able to use a tool to, to help these citizens. And so again, I want to thank council's indulgence, um, for addressing this issue. I want to thank the chairman for his leadership on this issue and the other members of council for, for realizing that a rising tide raises all ships. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Is that your public safety committee meeting report?
That is correct.
Two men together.
That is correct. That's correct.
Okay. Uh, fiscal tax and property committee meeting just took place right after the public safety committee meeting. Uh, we had an executive session where council, um, um, was made a presentation by economic development team to discuss a potential contract now for economic development now called Project Ignis, Ignis, uh, technology and committee meeting.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the technology personnel committee also met this evening and, um, all members were present. Uh, there was not a need to take any action, but we received some really, um, great information from the staff from that department. They're doing some very, um, innovative things with our technology on the website and have some great things that they're proposing to come to fruition hopefully in the near future, and we will be hearing about that more. And hopefully we'll be able to give, to give them their praise, um, for their diligent work that they're doing to bring us up to date and to keep us, um, current in the advancing of technology these days. And that's our report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Coming now to, uh, item number seven, reporting council members on other meetings, trainings, and our conferences.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add that the Sumter branch NAACP held its monthly meeting on Thursday, the ninth of February, and there was some discussion on the upcoming planning of the Black History Month program, which is tentatively scheduled for St. Luke Church on twenty-fifth of, sorry, Saturday, twenty-fifth of February. Uh, more information will be coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else? Hearing the monthly reports, Mrs. Bland.
Yes, sir. You had the, um, rules submitted. Anyone else interested in the, or would have to council members that will be participating? And several people are in, participating in the legislative action date in Columbia. The road will be having a farm to table. Any council members are interested in that, let me know. And the state of Sumter is being sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the chairman Kane will be one of the panelists, but any council members other than Mr. Washington already had his hand down, who would like to attend, please let me know. And, um, the sheriff's monthly report, sheriff's office monthly report is in, in the back. And last, but not least, there's, um, going to be a farm to city dinner, and I think it's pretty neat that it's going to be on the front steps of the courthouse. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Mr. Nexting County Administrator, what?
Mr. Chairman, uh, my deputy administrator has taken back to my chair to remind me that it's Valentine's Day, so I have no reports.
Come now to the public comment portion of our agenda, where citizens desire to speak, they approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you're limited to walk no more than three minutes. Comments are to be made through the chair. I now declare the public comment portion about a turn of open, anyone wishing to address council, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the rec. Uh-oh, we in trouble now.
Uh, my name is Myra Washington. Mr. Chairman, I would be remiss if I did not congratulate the councilman from Remberg on thirty years of marriage today.
Woo!
I didn't think it was possible, but.
You're growing up.
Sweetheart, I love you more today than I did ten thousand nine hundred and fifty days ago. It's been, it's been a real ride, and I'm looking forward to the next ten thousand nine hundred and fifty days.
I want to commend you for your outstanding career.
Chairman, if I could.
Absolutely. You gotta have a response to that.
I'd just like to say, like most of my colleagues up here, except Ms. McGane, I have been fortunate to marry above myself, and I realize that, and I am appreciative of Myra as my wife and my partner, and I do want to thank her, as you said, Chairman, for putting up with her for thirty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Jeffy Hughes. I want to, uh, recommend something that could bring in revenue, um, for the litter people. Um, I have picked up litter on the highways near my home, and I noticed that most of it is fast food, in particular, um, drinking cups. So I wonder if it would be possible to put in tax, or whatever you want to call it, on, um, fast food orders from fast food restaurants? If somebody orders it in their car or to go, maybe twenty-five cents is a thought. And I wanted to know, and I know you won't answer these because you can't, but has anybody talked to the item about putting the people's names in the paper or to try to get more? Or you have, uh, well, thank you for answering. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment section is closed before adjournment. The movement of the second deputy attorney, all in favor, please say aye. All in all.